Can I call to order county board work session? Want to thank everybody for being here tonight and hope you're starting to enjoy some of this nice weather.
I do before we get started, need to give a shout out to Dr. Shandor. He might have heard rescued me from a flat tire after we came back touring schools on Friday afternoon. Let me make the statement that regardless of what he tells you, I did not try to run him. The emergency brake was on the whole time, so just for clarification. We're going to start tonight with several presentations. I believe the first one is our Capitol Projects and I will look at Dr. Shandor.
Thank you. We have, I believe, six presentations this evening and a policy for discussion. I'll turn it over to Mr. Shearhart, who is our associate director for Capitol Projects, Mr. Shearhart.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board and Shandor. Capitol Projects report for the month of October. First project will cover high school, roofing, coating there. They're very close to being entire roof coated. They just had the very edges of the roof that's not done and they're waiting for the metal siding to be able to install the metal siding and then finish the roof coating. So the metal siding is going to be done for the most part on second shift. We have got, we just got some emails from the contractor that the siding material is supposed to be delivered on the 28th of October and the 1st of November. So finally that siding will be here. Their planned completion is fall of 2024 and that's where they're permitting. Once it gets too cold, they're not going to, they won't be able to apply the coating on the roof if it goes below 60 degrees. So this is what the roof looked like last month and you can see in the distance there they didn't have it completed. Now it's fully completed except for along the very edges. This is also the solo tubes over the art room. We had removed some old skylights there that were cracked and yellowed and put in some new solo tubes there. And this is what the roof looks like around those now. So they're, they're ready, they're just waiting for the siding. Tab Middle School HVAC replacement is the next project. All the equipment is running there and they are in the process of doing testing balancing on those, on those units. Remember if I explained that before, but testing and balancing, it'll make sure they have the proper airflow through the units. And also these units are water, water, water goes through these units since they're geothermal and they just make sure to have the proper water flow through them and make sure everything works in the unit. The commissioning is checking all the controls to make sure the heating and air conditioning comes on when it's supposed to and also checking the thermostats in each of the rooms. So that's the next step and all the old equipment is removed from the site. Next project is Mount Vernon and the equipment is also installed there and operating. They have, they were up on the roof working on a couple of things this morning, tweaking out a couple of things. And they have, they're waiting out the parts for one unit there, but everything else on that unit is running, on that roof is running. So testing and balancing there and commissioning as well is next steps. While we did the HVAC replacement there, they had to take some of the units off the roof where they were, they had curbs in the roof where the units were sitting and they had to remove those and move over those openings. And so there was some roof work done on this building as well. And so here's over the gym roof here, you can see in the center there, there's kind of a bump little, and that's where they took out one of the old units there. So this is over this last weekend, they were up there working and also some new siding they replaced last week. Tab High School, now we're going to the locker room makeovers and the lockers installation complete, drinking fountains. Everything's done, the students are using the locker rooms normally. They were scheduled to install a wire partition today, but they, the crew that's doing the wire partitions is also doing the lockers. So they decided to do, instead of spreading, splitting their crew up, they put all their crew on York Middle School installing lockers today. So they did not do this wire partition today. So this is what the lockers used to look like in York High School.
Tab High School, thank you.
Very orange, very used. And this is what they look like now. So we took, took out benches in the center and put them benches underneath the lockers, gave them more space. Tab Middle School locker room makeover. So lighting's installed, drinking fountains, lockers are all done. So again, there's a wiring partitions that was supposed to be installed today and same thing, same story as Tab High School. These are actually orange lockers painted black. This is what the boys locker room, lockers used to look like at Tab Middle School. Notice the floor and then a wooden black bench there in foreground. And this is what they look like now. So all new lockers, new benches and then the beautiful new floors. And the girls locker room used to look like this and now it looks like this. Again, the new beautiful, new floors and benches and everything. York High School locker room makeovers. Lighting, everything's done there. Students are also using those spaces. This is what York High School's locker room used to look like and now it looks like this. A little bit of change, little bit of change. This is the team room at the boys. It needs a little bit of love there, so it looks like that now. And then we have the girls locker room, same thing, same treatment as we had the boys. So it looks like this. And then we have the girls team room, looked like that before and now it looks like that. So a lot of changes there. And the last one we're doing is Yorktown Middle School. And we, there was a few things there, hurdles we had to go over. We had to jack the hammer up part of the floor in the girls locker room, about half of it. Replaced that new floor. We had to tear down some old walls in there and build some new walls. And then we had to do some ADA changes in there. So there was some hurdles that we had to do at York Middle that we didn't have to face at the other schools and it slowed us down a little bit there.
Why did the floor have to be?
There was some problems with the floor settling. So we wanted to take the floor out, find out why it was settling and repair that. We put new stone in there and then we put a new slab of concrete back in there. So we went in with, find out what that, what the cause of that was before we went back and did all the nice stuff. We wanted to find out what was going on. So the CMU walls and benches are complete, ceilings, lights, everything's done there. They did start installing the lockers this morning and the flooring is scheduled to start at the end of this month. They should have the lockers done this week, we think, but the flooring contractor, his schedule's booked up and we can't get him until the 28th. And then it'll probably take about a week and a half to two weeks to get the floors done. You had to sand them down and then put the chips down, then put the coating down. So it all takes, every, every step takes a few hours or a few days for it to secure. So this is what the boys locker room looked like before. I mean, we've taken it apart in this picture here. We already had the benches taken out, but notice the floors in here and you know, these are the lockers. And this is what it looks like today. So it doesn't look fantastic because it's not done done, but this is what it looks like now. It's painted out, all the rooms are painted out and the lights are all done. And then once they get the lockers in, actually the pictures, this was taken last week. The lockers are actually sitting in the room or on top of the benches now in various configurations right now. And this is the girls locker room. You can see in a very back distance there, the walls we had to tear down and rebuild. And that back half is where we had to tear all the flooring out and rebuild the flooring. So that's where we're at now and that's the last project for this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
I do. The flooring for York and Tab, the epoxy.
Yes.
Is that a commercial grade epoxy?
Yes, yes.
So you'd have to contact, if one wanted to do something like that, you would have to.
Yes.
I know my husband's watching, he's cringing right now. You have to contact a commercial person for that.
Yes.
They're really beautiful, that's why I asked, it's really.
Yeah, I don't think your husband could make it look like that.
Not with the Lowe's brand epoxy. Okay.
Yes.
I did have a question on the picture of Bruton High School, the solo tubes now. There was a large section of orange, looks like rust. My guess is it's probably just dirt or something that just got up there, but everything else is so pristine white.
I don't, I don't remember what that was right there. I'm not sure. It's, it's not rust on the roof. It might be a rag or something, I draw leaves, I'm not sure. It's not rust. It's all, it's all white like that.
Okay, that, that's what I thought it was. I just want to make sure that it wasn't something that, that got missed or there was a problem that no one spotted.
I think I took that picture and didn't catch it when I took the picture. Something there.
Good job.
Which problem?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the board's support on these projects. It has been a long time coming. After being here for 10 years, we have pushed, not only me, but previous superintendent and probably Dr. Staples who was here well before. These are those projects that they're, you want to say they're the nice to haves and they have to get pushed back sometimes because you have a roof or you have an HVAC system, you have bigger, bigger issues. So I appreciate Mr. Shearhart's work with getting these done. We still have, you know, still have a lot of work to do with those, but they look a thousand percent better than they were. Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Schaefer, your locker rooms don't look like that.
What?
Your locker rooms don't look like that.
No, my locker rooms do not. In fact, they don't look as good as the before pictures, okay?
Just saying.
Yeah, they're coming, they're coming. All right, so our next presentation, if you would like, Ms. Coon, we can jump into it.
Safety, we have safety and security, yeah.
Yeah, so the presentation you're going to see this evening, I know many of you board members have seen this presentation. We presented this with the sheriff's office a few weeks ago. We did want to share it this evening as well. We actually spent some time with our teacher advisory council last week. They got to hear and see this presentation. We really wanted feedback from teachers. They did a great job of giving us feedback by level, elementary, middle, high and what they saw. So we wanted to make sure that we continue to push out the work that we're doing with safety. Again, we will work through that now. All right, so obviously we have a wonderful relationship with the sheriff's office. Sheriff Montgomery has worked very closely with myself and the leaders of our team with Major West and Dr. Carroll. We've all worked very closely together for a number of years. And the main reason we did the presentation when we did it two weeks ago, we wanted, we wanted to make sure that this was a shared responsibility, that safety is a shared responsibility. It's parents who are working closely with us, kids who are taking responsibility and then obviously staff members. But the data you see in front of you, I believe Dr. Butler is from the first 20 days of school. So you see in the first 20 days of school, we had roughly, I want to say eight verbal threats and then eight on social media. And it's pretty clearly, you can see the elementary threats are mostly verbal and our secondary were mostly on social media. So just really quickly, this is, I'll give, just want to share with the board and with our community, this was sort of the root of at least three of our situations. So the situation or the slide up there on the, let me start over. The image up there on the left caused great concern for our school division as well as several others throughout the country. This is a list that originated in the UK. And Kyle Hahn, who is sitting here in the room with us, went through, I think it was 500, the list is about 500. And there were some familiar names. There was a Bruton School for the Girls that was on there and I believe there was a York, a York High or a York School. But those schools are located obviously in the UK. But that spread a lot of, and it's, that image alone and that social media post spread a lot of anxiety throughout school leaders and police and sheriff's offices throughout the country. The next one that's on the right is a screenshot and this actually originated from a school in Arkansas. So we had students who were screenshotting and sharing these types of things. And it went to one of our students who unfortunately chose and sent it to another student at about 1:45 AM. And we had some students get it in the morning and then, you know, kids are kids and it gets, it just gets dispersed. And it caused us some, not some, it caused a lot of work with a lot of people trying to figure out where this thing originated from. And it caused some of our military parents to, military, some of our middle school parents, excuse me, to show up at bus stops because they were concerned about this image. But we do appreciate our students that had this and brought this in. We had parents bring this into the school to share it with us, so that was very helpful. The next one that you can see actually originated in James City County. And this, I, it's blurry up there and I read it during the activity with the, with our families, but I won't do that this evening. But I'll share the context with you. We were sitting at the anxious generation presentation. I believe it was around nine o'clock, it was almost over and now the anxious generation conversation was with the first lady. And around nine o'clock, one of our principals who was in the session with us received this text. We were able to contact YPSO and within 30 seconds, they were working on this with us out in the cafeteria at Grapton High School. And we quickly found out that it wasn't a York County situation. But you can see, it was finally deemed not credible at 2:50 AM in James City County. It was a situation up there. And what they shared with our sheriff's office is that their police force or sheriff's office, they had to visit 55 homes. From nine o'clock until 2:50, they visited 55 homes to determine that it was an incredible threat. So again, this was sort of the reason why we wanted to make sure we put some of this stuff out there. What you see in front of you now, basically on the left side of the screen is from the sheriff's office. And if you skim down midway through the paragraph, it talks about a class six felony. However, any person who violates the subsection with the intent to commit an act of terrorism as defined by, as you can see the numbers on there, is guilty of a class five felony. So the sheriff really went into detail related to this. And on the right side of the screen during that, during that session with families, Dr. Aaron Butler and our team in student services reviewed, that's basically our code of conduct, which is in our handbook. All right, I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Carroll, who is going to take us through the next several slides.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. So in the public, a lot of the time, people just think of what you do to harden the schools in order to protect students and staff, but there's a lot more too. We have a tiered approach and I'm going to walk you through five areas of work there. So the first one is, we have to do proactive planning and we have processes for that and they're not all just our processes. The state puts some things in front of us also. So every year we do the annual school safety audit and their related inspections and those are prescribed by the state. And so we go through that process and then evaluate our results and every school does that for their own selves and then we do inspections also. Also, you know, things like having student supervision, you know, teachers in the hallways during, during duty periods or being at your doors at the beginning of a class period so that you're, you're out. You have an adult presence in the, in the hallways. And then it would be important to highlight the fact that we do school climate surveys every year and working condition surveys every year. And in both respects, with the last, last data we have, we're still waiting for last year's, but in previous two, is that the answers from our staff and our students are clustered around the answer of agree. Now there's also a strongly agree, but that's the top of the scale. And they're clustered around the agree to the question, I feel safe in my school. And so we start from that, that everybody that's working in our schools and attending our schools or the average is feeling, feeling good about the practices that we have in place generally. All right, so that's, those are some of our proactive processes. Then we also have things like our crisis management plan that's been developed over years. We update that every year. Every school has a copy and so do we up at the school board office. We have multi-agency collaboration, not just with the sheriff's department, but also with fire and life safety. I'll talk about that a little later. We have a variety of mandatory employee trainings that aren't just about the worst case things that we think about, but other ways that we keep students safe. And student conduct code assemblies are a common practice with our school administrations, with students at least once a year, if not twice, sometimes more. Now preventive measures here, these are the things that we, that people think about a lot with hardening our campuses. Obviously we want a sealed building envelope, locked exterior doors. We also want our locked, our interior doors set to lock so that they can be closed quickly. If we had to go to a lockdown drill, staff do a quick sweep and then close their doors that are locked. And then we've added security vestibules and we now have a security vestibule in every school in our division. Also, a couple of years ago, we put in some measures at Bailey Field in the pit. We have a clear bag procedures there and that helps enable the metal detectors and wand procedures. And we did these, at these outdoor venues because we have a lot of people that aren't part of the school community that are coming in, they're in a confined space and emotions can run high at those athletic events. We also have a criteria for certain indoor events where we could use the metal detection and the clear bags if we needed to. We've also added a lot to our security staffing over just the last few years. Dr. Shandor mentioned the coordinator of school safety, Mr. Hahn, who we're glad to have with us. His years of experience with York County, York, because in sheriff's office, his experience with being a part of our SRO program and leading that. And he brings fresh eyes and really helps with quality control to make sure that the procedures that we put in place are consistent. We also have added school resource officers at the middle school level a few years ago. And so now we have SROs at every secondary school. We also last year added school security officers, add two to each high school and one to each middle school. So we have an increased human presence at those buildings. And then when it comes to elementaries, the sheriff and Dr. Shandor have worked together to have road deputies check in on a regular basis at the, at the elementary schools. Sometimes they check in, just check into the school, check in with the administration. Sometimes they'll be sitting outside doing their paperwork and that's an irregular thing. It's not, it's not on a predictable pattern. We also employ technology to help us. We have 896 security cameras in our 18 buildings, school buildings. And we have three or four cameras on every school bus and we run about 120 buses a day. So we have a good presence for cameras. We also run the iTENID Kid visitor system that does kind of instantaneous background checks. We have the access control. You've seen the badges that, that we use to get into the, for staff to get in and also for people when they come to the front door, community members that want to come in. We were an early adopter of the access control system on the peninsula. We also have the 800 megahertz radio that every school has that keeps us in constant contact with the school board office. That's also what our buses use and so they, they reach well outside of the county. They have that type of power. And then the last thing on this slide I'd talk about is the reported feature, which has been something we've had at this division for a long time. It also, it works in collaboration with Let's Talk also. But when someone uses that hotline phone number or reports in using the app or the website, that immediately goes to a number of our administrators at the school board office. And so somebody's always available to answer those and to give them the attention that it deserves. And then we also do student and staff drills. The lockdown, lockdown drill requirements, in the first 20 days, we have to do a couple and then after the first 60, we have to do some more. We have to conduct four annually and that is also coordinated with the sheriff's office. And this is my third state, third school division. And I've had, I've experienced good collaborations with law enforcement in the past. Never seen a sheriff's department that's out at nearly every drill that we do. We just did them on our own in my previous school divisions. As a principal, you would just do it and document it and then you were done. But we always have, almost always have a presence from the sheriff's office and they can give us feedback on how we're performing and that's a great comfort. And these are important because as I've said before, people don't rise to the occasion, they rise to the level of their training. And so drilling on a regular basis is important. And a big drill that we did, a two parter over, not this past summer, but the two before that was Operation Falcon. And the first one, we did a lockdown simulation with real actors in the building with our administrators. After they did some tabletop work, then we did this simulation and it was very successful and really brought to life what we'd be dealing with in one of the worst situations in a, in a building. And then the second summer, we did the same thing with the addition of testing out our centralized family reunification that we had designed. So if we were to have a need of reunification for any reason, not just, not just active shooter situations, but it could be weather, it could be an event, a natural event, gas leak, airplane crash, that type of thing. Then we have agreements with a number of local facilities where we can take students, make sure that we can take the time to and have a methodical procedure to reunify families so that we can account for everybody that was in the building. And so we tested that out and that went very well. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Butler to talk about our threat assessment procedures.
Thank you. As a school division, we utilize a multi-tiered approach when it comes to threat assessment. And that's based off of back in 2007 when they had the tragedy at Virginia Tech. I was at Bruton High School at the time and so the general assembly in response made uniform policy that every higher education institution had to have a threat assessment team. There were several of our school psychologists who said, you know what, that would actually probably be a good idea for our schools to have a uniform process for how do we look at a threat? How do we manage the situation and then how do we report that information out? So then 2013, the general assembly then passed legislation that all public schools have to have a threat assessment team. And so we have policies and guidelines that govern that. And part of that process is that you must include someone with law enforcement experience, someone with school administration, someone with instructional and then someone with human resource if it's an individual. A lot of time we think about threat assessment, it's about students, but it could be for anyone that's a threat. It could be an individual, a contractor that's on school campus that shouldn't be there. It could be, it's a random adult that's on the building as well. So we have processes in place for that. And it starts off with just very simply, we're trying to gather facts and so we have the team together to identify information. We look at all the factors. In certain cases, the threat assessment team is authorized to get criminal records on individuals as well as medical history because they're trying to make sure they get a good picture of what is, what is the nature of the threat and is it on the pathway to violence? And then it goes into inquiry, assessment and then finally the management stage. And so by using that methodology, we've been able to work as a team, again, at all of our secondary schools. The school SRO is a part of the threat assessment team and in our elementary schools, we have a liaison with the York, because the sheriff department that goes and provides support to the teams at elementary level. I think on the next slide I can show you, so you can see since the beginning of the school year, and this has just been, as Dr. Shandor shared, the first 20 days of school. You can notice that we've had substantial number of threat assessments that were done. And it's not just threats to others, anyone has a threat itself that also has a process that's gone through with the assessment process. And you can see that we had 16 at the high school, 13 at the elementary and six at the middle school. But when you start looking at the range, the majority of those have all been low threat or no risk and that's what you want to see. And then those that were higher risk, we have certain procedures in place to manage those. Many times we work with our local community service providers. We do referrals to clone behavioral health and some of our other agencies to try to help us with the mental health component in addition to the discipline component that school staff are required to do by law as well in response to these behaviors. And then finally for some of our safety procedures, we try to make sure that we're using uniform language so that we can communicate with the sheriff department, sheriff office and also with our school staff. Dr. Carroll mentioned earlier that we had the megahertz radios that we use between all of our buildings and with law enforcement. So by having uniform language, using the hold in place, the modified lockdown, lockdown and evacuation, everyone on the team, including our partner agencies, fire, life, safety, when they hear that on the radio, they understand what those are. We have put that in our student handbooks also so that families and students are familiar with those terms. And we do practice these different drills throughout the course of the year as Dr. Carroll showed as well.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. All right, so Dr. Carroll did mention the reunification part of this. Again, we had, Sheriff Montgomery actually did this slide, if you recall, from the session with the community. And basically what he was trying to remind parents, if there is a situation in your child's school, as you can see, number one up there is please stay home. Because we are in the process of trying to transition students to another location. And if the school is rushed with cars and whatnot, that could just delay the process of getting everybody reunified. We obviously need to have people stay informed and we will work through our communication channels to do that during that situation. And again, he encouraged our, our families to be ready as well. All right, so homeschool communications, you can see our priorities. Go ahead, do you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question back on the statistics page for this one, that one. Could you describe just in general what's considered low threat, medium threat, high threat, imminent?
Right, so when anything's the imminent threat or critical, that means that that student has an immediate need of hospitalization and removed from campus because they pose a threat to themselves or others. And there's a battery of questions that are. to themselves or others, and there's a battery of questions that our teams go through. So we get our guidance from the Department of Criminal Justice, and they have like a list of different questions, and when you start hitting certain thresholds, then it escalates to that point where that student needs to be removed and get immediate help. Moderate means that there may be a risk that's still there, but it's just not, so the student is starting to express some concerns, but there's not like a detailed plan, there's not the methodology to do it, meaning that they don't have access to weapons, but they have some type of anxiety or to answer questions in such a way to make the team say that there's some additional interventions that need to be put in place so that that person can go back to a good state. And so because of that, that's the difference in the level. So low just means that it could have just been someone had accidental comment, they got mad or in a situation, they were upset with someone, and they made a comment, but then they showed remorse, there was no history of violence, there was no history of any type of disruptive behavior.
What about the high threat? You said the imminent, and then you went to moderate, the high threat. The reason I'm asking is that I know there were two instances, high school, that personally I would consider high threat, the, the ones that were in the media with the children charged.
So high threat, so imminent would mean that you need immediate hospitalization. High means that there is, that there has been escalation behaviors, that the person has not been able to stop perseverating on trying to do something, it's just that they haven't reached that threshold where they need to be immediately taken to the hospital or they need to be immediately taken to be seen by a professional. But it still means that there's a serious threat, that they have every intention of doing harm to someone else, and so that's typically why we don't let that student back in the building. Many times there's a high threat, we have to work with law enforcement, and many times I'll have to require that that student get a clinical evaluation from someone outside of our area who focuses on youth violence assessments, and once we get that clarification from them and clearance, then we talk about transitioning the student back into a school environment. But that's different. Anything that's higher imminent, it takes to a different level when it comes to the division level threat assessment team.
Okay, I guess I was looking at more of the two that I know, the, the threat of shooting Tab High School and then threat of shooting at York Event. What are they considered in here? Because I'm looking at high school, and it's only showing medium, medium, low, and no.
Right, so I can answer that question, and we're not going to talk about the individual events tonight, because we don't want to reveal that information.
No, absolutely not.
But I will share with you, because something makes it on the news doesn't make it a higher imminent. It doesn't. It could be a situation that may have gone to social media and has got a lot of traction, and when they went and they review a situation with the team, that there, it could be low, but because it's still out there, it's still gonna, the sheriff's office is still gonna work through their process, but that does not mean it's higher imminent.
Okay, just because, so just because the sheriff's office may be directed by law, they have to address certain things certain ways, that doesn't mean that it changes the threat level here.
Right, that's separate. The threat level is separate from any charges and/or any school discipline. So all three of those things are factors.
Right, in fact, I mean, because you have a situation, the child may get charged because of a social media post, because of, you know, making a threat on the score or whatnot, but when they do, as Dr. Butler mentioned, as they go through those steps, there's no history of anything, no, no means, they had, there are no weapons in the home, there's no civic plan, no plan, no nothing, it was, child made a bad decision. It either said or they posted it. So again, that's why that could be a low or no threat.
Okay, thank you.
But they're still subject to.
Oh, yeah. With the schools and with the sheriff's office, absolutely.
Just a quick question while we add this. All of these threat assessments are related to students, related threats, like members of community, are they falling into these categories at all, are they counted right now?
Yes, so we have a separate process. So at the division level, there is a threat assessment team, it includes Dr. Wright's from our HR department, myself, usually the SRO supervisor at, at the sheriff's department, our coordinator for health services, and our lead school psychologist. And what we do is if there's a threat that happens, because it could be, it could be the spouse of a staff member, because that's happened before since we've been in this position, where that person was making some threatening comments, and so we had to work with law enforcement to try to make sure that the staff member was safe, as well as the school community, because we didn't want an individual going on the campus and making threats of violence towards the staff members. So we do have like a different team. It wouldn't be the school-based team, because they wouldn't have expertise in that, but that's why we have the oversight team.
All right. Is this where I was?
Sorry about that.
No, you're fine. I just don't want to make sure I don't skip a slide. All right, so school home communications, as we know, is, is critical as we're communicating to our families when things happen in schools. So obviously, our priorities are our students, staff, safety. Before we send any communications, we want to make sure that we gather the facts. As I told the principals, and we meet with them quite often, told them today again, we're not going to send a communication out until we have all of the facts, because the last thing we want to do is communicate information out to 700 parents at elementary or, you know, 1,000 or so at a high school and not have the accurate information. We want to obviously make sure it's accurate, and then as we're working through our situation, whatever that situation may be, we want to make sure that we're making an informed decision. And that's not just one person making that decision. It could be a number of our ELT members in the room who are contributing to the information as we're receiving information from the school, whether it's an administrator on campus, or typically when we have a situation at a school, we send an ELT member. So we may send Mr. Dolak to a particular elementary school when there's a situation going on, and he can help share information with us related to what's going on at the school, and then Mr. Han can share as the liaison with us and the sheriff's office so that we're making the right decisions moving forward. You can see our processes as well, determining the scope of the situation. Sometimes these things are really, really complicated. We love it when they're simple, but unfortunately, a lot of the time, they're, they're pretty complicated. And again, when we're going to communicate, if there's two kindergartners arguing out at the swing set, we would communicate to the identified impacted families. You know, we would have the administrator call those two parents. If there's a situation on a bus, which we've had a few of those this year, if it's bus, I'm just throwing a number out, 318, and, and there was a situation on 318 where a child said or did something that the sheriff's office had to get involved with on the road or whatever, then we would communicate directly with those kids on, or those families on the bus. And we certainly want to be as transparent as possible without causing any undue harm. And when you think about school communications, sometimes we'll hear that we're either hiding, you know, you know, social media is great, but it's not great, because sometimes we'll have situations where folks will assume we're hiding information. We have to make sure that we are protecting the, the students, so there's legal and privacy considerations when we go to communicate. The scope of the situation, again, we have to make sure that we're, what we're communicating that we are not exposing the integrity of a legal investigation or our investigation in the school, and then also avoiding disruption. Did I leave anything out there, Jim? Dr. Carol, sorry. All right, when you think about direct school home communications, there's a numbers, a number of ways that we can communicate, as you can see on the screen, by phone, by email, by text message. We've encouraged a lot of our folks in our community to get on the app. The app is really, really good because it has a ton of information. I've said it in every session, if you need to know if it's an A or a B day after a holiday, you can find out that way versus emailing me. But what I'll share with you is, while we have various situations, Ms. Goff is involved in our team, and again, depending on what that situation is and how much time we have, sometimes that dictates whether we do a, if the principal does a phone call, an email, or a text. So really, sometimes it just depends on that situation. I did want to share that we have around, I had some numbers with me, as far as communication, so we have over 44,000 contacts to make for families, and that could be, and this is phone contacts, so, you know, parents have, you know, a desk phone, a home phone, a cell phone, whatever, it's around 44,000, and we have about 2,100 who've opted out. So that's about 5%, which isn't, isn't awful when you think of the larger number of 44,000. Text messages, we have about over 22,000 cell phones, and we have about 3,500 who've opted out, and that's about 15%, because we know that how the world is now, people aren't communicating and receiving information via text. Email, we have about 38,000 opportunities to email parents and family members, and we have about 307, so that's almost not even a percent. So we talked about this at the event with, at the sheriff's office, and my, my request is for families and parents to please opt back into this if you've opted out. It is critical that our schools are able to reach you and contact you and share that information with you.
Have you seen any increase in downloading apps or opting in or out since the last meeting?
They're about the same, they're about the same. I will tell you where we have seen an increase. Thank you, that's a great question. With our student handbooks, that night at the meeting that was a couple of weeks ago, I think I announced, we had 4,500 students not have their handbook in their compulsory education. Those are the two legal pieces that parents are supposed to acknowledge in the first month of school. So it was about 4,500, so that's like a third of our families. Dr. Butler worked with our principals, we sent a communication out five or six days after that that was pretty consistent, and it only went to the families who haven't filled it out. We're down to about 1,800 now, which is, which is positive. Dr. Carol sent another one two or three days later, and so they're steadily rolling in. I know we're going to talk about, we have had a few parents reach out, you know, Let's Talk about, you know, please send me a paper copy and whatnot, so, so we'll work through that. But again, I'm glad that it went from 4,500 to 1,800, so at least folks were acknowledging that we have a code of conduct and, more importantly, the compulsory education, or, excuse me, compulsory attendance. All right, so our goal in an actual emergency situation is to make sure we share an initial message. We try to get that without, out to the community within hopefully 15 minutes or sooner. That just means, you know, here's the situation, if you noticed the, the fire department or, you know, the sheriff's office, presence increased, what we want to tell parents to acknowledge, we're aware to, we know, and we're working through that situation. The next part there would be criteria for emergency communications. If there's a credible threat to students, staff, or the building, we're communicating. If there's an interruption to the school's, school's daily routine, we've had a lot of those this year, quite honestly, and board members, you're aware, because I send you the ELT messages, I think last Friday or Thursday, we broke a record, it was like nine in one day. And it's unfortunate, and those aren't all for threats. A lot of those are for, we have a medical situation in one of our schools, we have to put a school and hold in place so that our fire and life safety people can come in and either take care of the child or a staff member. So we have those processes. We always let our parents know when those situations are going on. And then if there's ever a high level of discussion, inquiry, rumor, or misinformation, and we know that that's something that every school district in the country deals with, with the, the use of social media, where somebody heard something, instead of them calling the school or calling the sheriff's office, they'll just post it on 911 and say, does any, is anyone aware of yada, yada? Then it becomes a, you know, 80, 80 people have chimed in, and what we're requesting from the school division and the sheriff's office, if there's a situation you're concerned about, call the schools or call the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office is open 24 hours, you can call them anytime. If there is a concern of any kind that involves our schools, we really want you to go that route. All right, here's some challenges that we face, and we had this conversation there as well. Our students thinking, or our parents saying that the threat was a joke, and, you know, we, we know which, what's going around that happened at Parkland, which, you know, what happened at Richneck, that we take every single threat or any, any sort of social media posts, we took, take those serious. The sheriff's office works extremely closely with us, and the amount of time and effort that it takes to work through and find out, to find these to be non-incredible, is, is a lot of time. So we, we treat them all serious, serious, and they're not a joke. Students reposting on social media, resharing via text message, we had this conversation as well that night. I, you know, I have children of my own who are in our schools, it is our responsibility as parents to make sure that we are aware of what they're posting, what's going on there, and making sure that you're randomly having that conversation with your child or pulling what they have on there. I'm guessing that most parents purchase those phones, reminding them that those are your phones, so make sure that you go on there and take a look from time to time to make sure that they're being responsible and a good, a good digital citizen, so to speak. Families not sharing information with the sheriff's office or school division, I just mentioned that one. Families posting or sharing rumors, that really is a big, big challenge for the sheriff's office and us. Potential threats being reported to school staff after hours via voicemail, email, or social media messaging, again, that's why we encourage folks to call the sheriff's office. We have had multiple situations where a family would report something to YPSO or the school division but would not cooperate, meaning they wouldn't let an officer talk to the child to get more information or see how it was shared or where it was, and quite honestly, all that does is slow the investigative process down. Again, we have call 911 there because we really want folks to alert, you know, the sheriff's office. We also have several incidents that occur outside of school being treated as a school matter. We have situations that happen on Saturdays and Sundays, we have situations that happen. We had one that happened, I think, on a Saturday before the homecoming dance, I think, Ms. Fairman, that was the one you were referencing. You know, that wasn't even a high school student, it unfortunately ended up being an eighth grader who was involved in that situation, and it took the sheriff's office, you know, and the school's quite a lot of time to work through that situation on a Saturday. Dr. Butler, I think we were on the phone from six to eight or something, working through that, and then trying to assist one of our assistant principals to communicate during their homecoming dance to families. So, you know, these things, it's, it's, there's a lot of work that goes into it. Families not supporting appropriate levels of school discipline, you know, that's something that is, I think, in any school in America, that's something you're going to encounter. All right, family responsibilities, you know, we talk about parent rights, but we also need to talk about parent responsibilities, and these, I think there's eight or nine of them up on the screen, those are all in our student handbook, so I would encourage any parents watching or community members, please read these, they're extremely important. Meet with the school staff when you're requested. Obviously, be respectful in all related interactions, make, make sure that school attendance is a priority for your child, promote good decision-making, review the student conduct code, it is extremely important, and then providing the updated information with us. How can you help us? So I've said this in several board meetings, and I know that our principals talk about this all the time, talk to your children about the seriousness of making a threatening comment. Talk to your children about what they can and they cannot bring to school. We have a lot of issues, and, you know, unfortunately, our board members are put in the position at an expulsion hearing because we have children that bring things to school that they should not bring to school. Let's see, talk to your children about their use on social media and the phone, we've talked about that a ton. Let's see, if you own firearms, again, the sheriff was, wanted to make sure we had this one on there, if you own firearms, please make sure they're, they're safely and securely stored away so that your, your child cannot access them. In the event of emergency, rely on the official updates from the school division and the sheriff's office. Again, we know there's a lot of different Facebook sites out there in York County that represent different groups, whether it's 411 group or, or other community groups, but if you need information from the schools, pay attention to the school division Facebook page and our communication methods, or the sheriff's office and how, how they communicate. And then the avoiding rumors, I think that's one thing that really, again, I can't say enough about spreading unverified information, and we really need the adults in the county to really help us with that. So if they, if there's a situation that they hear of, call us immediately so we can look into it and make sure that we can find it non-incredible, or if there's a situation that we really need to look into, we get the sheriff's office and our team together and make sure we get to the bottom of it, so nobody gets hurt. All right, that concludes our presentation. I want to thank Dr. Carol and Dr. Butler for their contributions to this. We are available for any questions you may have.
I have some comments, and then I have some questions. So the first thing I want to say, comment-wise, so over the last month, I've been in everybody, pretty much all the schools, I have a couple more to go to, and then I'll have been in all the schools in the division. I will say that when you walk into a school, you can tell a lot about the climate when you walk through the door, there's just that air, and I will say that the climate is very positive. I don't see anxiety on people's faces, people worrying. I'm talking with the administrators during my walkthroughs and looking myself at all things like entryways, you know, things posted, making sure that kids aren't letting people in, everything, and it doesn't, I don't sense fear, and they've told me that, you know, they feel safe, and your surveys back that up. I didn't talk to kids, but I know that from your surveys. So I will say that, and that's just from me on the ground in the schools. I know that we have another piece, and it's, it's, it's a little, but it's a we have another piece, and it's, it's, it's a little, but it's a big piece, is that we have these connection coaches or success coaches, I don't know which are the right terminology.
It's student connection coaches, you're right.
That's huge, because they connect those kids with, who might not be coming to school or might be maybe flying under the radar, or the one you might worry about, and make sure they're engaged. And when kids are engaged, they're less likely to want to do silly things or, or take, you know, an adverse reaction to something. So that's a positive. And then something else I noticed was, I'm just really impressed with the administrators, and they know these kids' names. And when you walk through a hallway, and I'm not talking about, you know, Joe Athlete, I'm talking about a kid who's walking down the hall, who, you know, just head down, who just, maybe average kid, they know their names, and they'll, they'll stop and say, hey, so-and-so, how you doing? Doing okay today? So their eyes are on kids like that too, which also prevents problems. And I, I've never really seen that anywhere else that I've gone, and I go through a lot of schools and other districts as well. So I just wanted to put that out there for the board to know, as positive from my observations. Question that I have, when we go back, when we were looking at the slide about the metal detector for the football game, something that was brought up to me, and of course, I didn't have an answer for that, so I will defer to you, we have that for the football games. Why not for basketball games or volleyball games, where you're going to also have crowds and people coming in, and basketball can be kind of a high contentious sport as well? So, can you speak to that?
Yep.
Yeah, as I said, we have criteria for those indoor events if we feel like that's in place. Yes, you do, but you just don't have as many people, and, but you can have high emotion, but we have a checklist of criteria. If we feel like we need them, then we can, those are completely mobile and we can get that.
And we've used them for basketball before.
Oh, okay.
We've used them indoors before, you know, if there's a potential rivalry game, or if teams are, you know, if there's some social media stuff going on during the week.
Social media chirping, that happens.
You might put one in just based on, okay.
Yeah, so, and they have a criteria for that. And I, I need to say this too, part of what we share, we can't share everything, we can't share all of our plans, we don't want to share all of our plans.
Right, right.
For a number of reasons. But I will say, when we presented this to the teachers the other day, so many of them were, were, were sharing, it gives me great comfort that there is a plan, that we have a reunification plan, that we have a trailer that has everything in it, thanks to Mr. Dolak and his team, and that SBO is going to come and run the reunification. So again, our teachers, again, a lot of our employees may not know that information, but for them, it was very reassuring that we have that, that plan already in place.
Yeah, and I think I would say that, from the safety forum that we, we had, I mean, it was very eye-opening to see all that is done from A to Z, to make sure that we are trying to dot every I and cross every T. I guess my question to the board would be, from your perspective, you know, is there, is there anything else that, you know, you've kind of thought of over the last, you know, I know we've been talking about this for several weeks, that, you know, that we might need to do, to do our due diligence. I don't know, you know, are we good where we are? Do we need to, you know, have further discussions? Do we need a committee to look at something? I just want to make sure that we are, because safety is so important.
Absolutely.
And kids are so important.
I, I would like to share the same observation as Kim did, with walking into the hallways in our schools, how much our administrator actually do care and do know the children. That's very unusual, like, you know, where I'm coming from and seeing that, it just brings a real joy to my heart. What I want to ask Dr. Carroll, just a couple of things. We talk a lot about keeping the threat outside of the school, just lockdown, we do a tremendous job. That's, that's, I'm taking that off of that. With the drill that we have in place that we do four times a year, do we exercise drills that something actually got into the school, or it's like within the school, behind closed door? How do we approach those things?
Well, lockdown drill would apply to a lot of that. Are you asking if the threat actually got into a specific room?
It's like specific room, or in instance, like, you know, student brought.
Yeah.
You know, that went to the school, and it went in behind, it was nothing like that we could do to prevent that, except the metal detectors or like, I don't think.
Go ahead, I'll let you answer that first, and then I'll...
I mean, if the threat is outside the school, then typically we would go into a modified lockdown, because the envelope of the school is locked, and they would allow students to continue to learn. The lockdown drill is something's gotten into the building, or is very imminent. And so, yes, we do do that. Now, do we get to the level of something in a particular room or that type of thing? That would be more along the lines of that Operation Falcon, where we enacted a specific scenario with actors.
So, through Falcon, what year was that?
That was 20, somewhere.
Last summer, in the summer of 2023.
Is that something that we should look into doing yearly or on certain kind of schedule?
We certainly can. I mean, we, we did it, the first, first summer was, was really enlightening for all of our administrators, I would say, right? For, for our entire team.
And then we do a tabletop first, and then we did the...
Yes, we did the tabletops first, because, you know, part of it is, I think, that our community and our parents, this makes you feel good as a parent. Our officers know, wherever the situation is in that building, if they, that's why there's numbers on every door and letters everywhere and all those types of things. These guys, I keep looking at Kyle like you're still wearing a badge, I apologize. But they, they know exactly where to go, and they know exactly what to do when they get there. Watching that, because I, I sort of stood outside of it that day as more of an observer, and Dr. Carroll ran the, what was it called?
The division response.
The division response team, and we worked through that. But knowing their expertise, meaning the sheriff's office expertise, that they know our buildings extremely well, there are some divisions in the state where the sheriff's office or the police department doesn't even have keyer access to get in a building, right? I mean, that's very true, correct, Kyle? So, knowing that our, our guys could come in immediately and go in immediately, that's the response, that's refreshing. The other thing I'll share with you about the drills, it's important that we vary the times of the drills, right? So, it might be lunchtime versus everyone's in first period, it's the middle of first period, it's comfortable, there might be four kids on a hall pass, and they look out and sweep, and we come in and we do it, right? But we want to make sure we're doing that at various times of the day. And, you know, during a transition is the hardest time, during arrival, during dismissal, that, those are really difficult, because your instincts have to take over immediately to get kids and get them where they're supposed to be. Also, making sure we're hitting the button, making sure we're locking down the school, and making sure that we're contacting law enforcement to get them there. So, it's, this isn't something that's, you know, the typical fire drill, right? You walk outside in a line, we know which door you're going to go out, teacher takes role, I have everybody. Lockdown's completely different.
And further to your question, the type of level of Operation Falcon, that's summer work, and we're in, we're in open conversations with the sheriff. And that was not just for us, that was also for his staff and for fire and life safety, to how would they operate in that environment. And so, we talk every year about what training do we think we need to have in the summertime. They also use our buildings for different training, which further helps them to know the buildings.
Yeah, the debrief, the debrief part of those trainings is the most powerful, because the sheriff debriefs with his team, we debrief with our team, and then fire and life safety, they debrief as well, and then we get together and we talk and figure out what went wrong, what were some things we need to, to tighten up on. It's really helped us, I think it's really helped us.
And we look at the option with the metal detection, detection systems in place, and like, do we have feedback from other divisions that might use that?
I think, I mentioned it that night, that there were, I think there's pros and cons to using metal, having metal detectors at every school. It could possibly promote a false sense of security when it comes to those, and I've, I know that people may disagree with that, but you have to understand that, at a potential school, at York High School, how many doors are at York High School? Thirty?
Exterior doors, at least thirty.
So you have thirty-some doors exterior on a campus at a high school. You know, if you, it just, Vic's opinion, if you're going to walk through, everyone through the front door of York High School, do we really think that those thirty doors, I mean, you know, we can't lock them in, we can't lock, I mean, I mean lock, lock those doors because it's a fire hazard, so you can't do that. So, you know, to Ms. Goodwin's point earlier, the relationship piece and making kids feel safe and make sure you are in touch and in tune with every child in the school, to me, that's the most important part of this work. But having a, you know, kids walk through a gate in the morning, think about, then, again, the questions that we had were, who's going to man the gate for the community, the, the community organizations that use our schools over the weekend? Who's going to man the security gate for rec? Because we have parks and rec in, you know, ten elementary schools. We have various programs in the summer. We have PE classes that go outside and come in, are we going to walk all those kids or ROTC, are we going to walk them all out through the front, all the way out to the back at York High, and then walk all the way out back to the front? So, I just think there's a lot of things to consider. Are there pros? Yes. But I think there's pros and cons. The feedback that I got, I received from a few of my colleagues from around the state and around the country would be, knee-jerk reaction to rushing to put them in is not the best way to do it. And that was something that came up with several...
I think people just think that that's the panacea, right? If we have that, then everything will be fine. If you're in a controlled situation like an airport with TSA, one way in and one way out, that, that's a totally different situation than you have with a comprehensive high school.
The interesting thing too, that's worth noting, is that we take every threat seriously. I mean, if a child comes with a nail file and says, yeah, I'm going to cut you with this, I mean, that's, that's a big deal, right? We take that seriously. So everything is taken serious. And I think if you look around at other places that may have had issues, I don't think that it was, threats were necessarily taken that serious, and that leads to problems.
Yeah, and I'd have to say too, that when you look, I'd have to agree that when you look at that connection with staff and the students, that's a big deal. But the other big deal is our community, our parents, and having that connection with their children. And, and that's the big thing, I think we have positive going for us in York County, and the see something, say something, all of it's working right now, and that's great. I hope it continues and gets better, with parents cooperating as well. And I understand they're reluctant, you know, they don't want to single their child out and, you know, have them, you know, be the brunt of something later on, that, oh, you told this, you told that. And I understand that, but on the, on the flip side of it, this is pretty serious. I think you just need to go, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Charlie.
Sorry, Charlie. We got a report, this is pretty serious.
And to Mr. Pyavich's point again about the metal detectors, the sheriff made a great point that night. He said, you have 120 buses that run every day, are we going to put metal detectors on the buses as well? So, it's, it's a much larger conversation, I think, as we're moving forward with this. But, but to go back to your original question, yes, we have the, the units, we use them at the pit up at Bruton, we use them at Bailey Field, and we use them for sporting events because we have a team that works through a criteria if we need them.
I had a question from the teaching standpoint. Since I've taught full-time in York County, and then I was also a substitute, I've gone through the lockdown drills. The one thing that I remember that we never practiced was if, what do you do when you have to evacuate that area, the extraction of a classroom? Is that part of the training now, or the possibility of having that? I know you probably did that with the, the scenario one, but do teachers know ahead of time, everybody knows the lockdown, they know where to go, but if the proverbial you-know-what hits the fan in that classroom, do the teachers know what, what to do and where to go in that situation?
Well, that's all situation-dependent, and they would be under, if, like you said, if it's the worst-case scenario, that then is a crime scene, and the sheriff's department is the one that's directing people. So it's, it's room by room, you're being guided to where you would go. It's not just that everybody go like a, like a fire alarm.
Right, and that's, that's what I was thinking of. I didn't know, is that ever practiced of, these are some of the areas that you may be directed to go, just so teachers know ahead of time, because they're going to be gathering their students, you know, in a group to aid with the sheriff who is guiding them. That, I just know from being on that teacher's standpoint, I would like to know ahead of time, okay, if things go bad, these are the possibilities that I may be directed to go.
The truth of the matter is, there are too many possibilities to anticipate. We all depend on what's happening in that building, what exit points are available to you.
Okay.
And works the best for getting the students out of the building.
Yeah. I'll ask, Kyle and Mr. Dolak are here, and they do, they run these drills all the time, so do you have anything to add?
Sure. To reiterate what Dr. Carroll said, we don't necessarily drill the evacuation part, because as Dr. Carroll said, it's situation-specific. What, what I always tell folks is, if we were in a worst-case scenario and there was an actual lockdown, then, as Dr. Carroll said, it could possibly be a crime scene, but at the very least, it's under the control of sheriff's department. So they're calling the shot, and they're going to...
You're telling us where to go.
Where to go, yes.
Okay.
So, and, and, I'm sorry, I was going to say, and every situation is going to be different, as to who goes when and where, and things of that nature.
So I can add a little bit to that. In years past, principals will ask us to come in and roundtable some discussions, or even do a tabletop exercise at schools, and we will dive into the procedure. Once the officer comes and it's time to evacuate, we'll talk through what it's going to look like, how we're going to want you to evacuate, and not knowing really the area that you'll be going to, but kind of, they can go back and talk to their students when we're doing the drills, like, this is what to expect. And then when we have the sheriff's office do the drills with us, there are times that they'll come in and we'll open some doors in the classroom, and they have a moment to talk with the, the teacher or the students as well.
Okay, that's very helpful.
Thank you. And the last question I have briefly, just want to, you can let everybody know, I know on some of the buses, we have older video equipment that yields some fuzzy footage, and so just what's in the pipeline as far as replacing that down the road?
Right, well, we're still working on the, the Stop, Stop Arm Bus, the name's escaping me now, the company, still working through that, that contract that I presented to you last spring, with that package, our brand-new state-of-the-art cameras.
Oh, great, okay.
The thing that I've noticed also in the schools is not just the administrators and the teachers knowing all the kids and all, but the SROs and the security officers, they know everybody. And, I mean, especially in the middle school, they are role models for the kids. So they're very close to, to just about everyone in there.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I know that was long and a lot of questions, but...
That was good, thank you.
I appreciate that. Alright, so I believe we are now going to move on to next presentation, which is our per pupil expenses. Dr. Shandor?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Bill Bowen, we're, we're going to welcome Mr. Bowen back. I said some very unkind things about him at the last meeting, and I, I know Heather is somewhere watching this right now, so we're really happy to have you back, Mr. Bowen. The whole team is happy to have you back. He is going to present on per pu, per pupil expenses, and then he's also going to review some information related to FY24 financial audits and end-of-year audits. So I will turn it over to Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening on the annual update of per, on per pupil expenditures. This evening's presentation focuses on the strategic priority for supportive culture. And when we think about supportive culture and per pupil expenditures, we have a, we, we ask ourselves a leading question, and that is, are our financial resources and other supports allocated effectively to ensure that our students are successful? So when we start this, it's important to understand how these calculation for per pupil expenses is, is obtained here with Department of Education. So annually, each school division is required to report their expenditures to the VDOE, and this is done through a process with the annual school report. This is, and code is required to be submitted by September 30 of, of every year. The, the Department of Education then takes this information and, and uses this formula to determine what per pupil expenses are for the division. Now, we wanted to show this because VDOE actually uses similar data like this for other metrics. But what they do for per pupil expenditures is total operating expenses, expenses divided by the average daily membership at the end of the year. And we have an average daily membership at March 31st that we use for funding, but this is based on an end-of-year ADM. And it is, it does include things such as food service, summer school, preschool, but one of the more common exclusions in their... one of the more common exclusions in their metrics is to exclude debt service and capital outlay additions. But we, but if you look at other metrics that the VDOE uses, they'll often exclude pre-K, summer school, and sometimes food service. So on this slide, what we see here is a table of our regional comparators. These are the group of schools in our region that we generally compare ourselves to for this data and some testing data. Please note that this is, the funding comparison is based on FY23 data. So we just submitted our annual school report for FY24. That information won't be updated and released by the Department of Education until later this spring. So what we see here is, we see a high in per-pupil expenditures of $17,329 and a low of $14,375. The difference is $2,954. Now, one thing we also look at when we look at this slide is we want to compare ourselves to those school divisions that are more closely aligned with us, particularly with student size. That would be Portsmouth, it would be Suffolk and Williamsburg, James City County. And when we look at those school divisions, Portsmouth has about 3,200 students, Suffolk 14,400, and James City County 11,500, and that compares to York County at 12,815. And if we just look at Williamsburg, James City County, they are roughly 1,500, I'm sorry, 1,300 students less, but spend $527 more per student. There's a lot of information on this slide. This is the statewide comparison of school divisions and per-pupil expenses. So we'll start up in the upper left-hand corner, and this is the top 10 of those school divisions. So we, we go from a high of $26,642 per pupil at Surrey County, and then contrast that with what we see as the low in the lower right-hand corner, which is Radford at $10,540. So more than $16,000 difference in per-pupil expenses.
Can I ask you a question? Because I will forget if I leave it at the end. Is Surrey not big?
No. So there's a, there's a number of factors that can, that account for these differences and disparities, and disparities. So Surrey, for instance, they have about 700 kids, but the geographic outlay of Surrey County, it's, it's about 200 square miles for those 700 kids. So one of the differences could be just the operating costs to get those kids to school. More buses, more bus drivers, maybe more, just general operating costs for buses. That's probably one reason. Another reason could be economic disadvantaged population, because in school divisions with a higher percentage, they receive higher, they receive more state funding and federal funding. And it could be the locality. Locality has to provide more support for that, for that smaller school division.
So do you think these numbers are fair, kind of compared to per-division?
That's a great question. I've often argued, and certainly we argued about the ESSR stimulus funding. Now, the ESSR funding is playing a part of this, too. So of the school divisions that I showed on the previous slide, of our regional comparators, these are the ones in yellow, we received the fewest stimulus dollars. We received just over 16 million. We had school divisions in our region receive an upwards of 100 million. So that's certainly playing a part of that, but it just depends on the years that they spend, and we had three years to spend those, those dollars. So '23 was a big year, '24 is going to be a big year. So I would expect to see some of these similar numbers for next year because of the ESSR dollars. And then, of course, they tail off now September of '24, the ESSR funds. So we're looking forward, this is where in the second column, we start to see some of our regional school divisions start to show up. And we also see the state average at $16,676. Yes.
Question, are all salaries included in this?
Yes.
Okay. So we look pretty good when you compare to state average in terms of what we spent-
Bang for your buck, yes.
On per-pupil expenses.
And so this next column is, again, just our, our regional group within this column, and then finally Suffolk, Williamsburg, and then York County. So I mentioned that the, the leading question, are our financial resources and other supports allocated effectively to ensure that our students are successful? But just looking at the costs themselves doesn't really paint that picture for us. So the best metric we can use is looking at our student test data. Now, we've seen this information, Dr. Skinner and her staff have presented this information, I think it was in September, but we can take a look at it again. Our on-time graduation rate, state average at 92.85%, and York County is second at 97.73. And then we have English reading, state average 73, and York County leads the region at 87. And this is similar, similar numbers from what we see with English writing, York County at 87, state average 76. And in history, we're ranked number one, and then with SOL math and SOL science, we also rank number one. And then one final metric we can look at is the NISH rating. This, the NISH just released their, their updates on the top school divisions in the state of Virginia. And if you're not familiar with NISH, they are an organization that's considered a leader in the market for providing data analysis on schools, colleges, and universities and communities. And what they, what they reported is that York County is number three in the state behind Arlington and Falls, Falls Church. And so when we look at the, at Falls Church, that, that school division has about 2,500 students located in northern part of the state, and then Arlington has about 27,000, almost 28,000 students, again, located in the northern part of the state. Now, when school divisions that are up there, they certainly pay higher salaries, they have higher operating costs, so certainly that, that can account for some of the differences. But then when you look at York County, we're about $10,000 off from those other schools, per student, per student.
What I think is impressive is more money doesn't necessarily equate to better outcomes, as evidenced by where we are with our scores.
Right.
So we're spending less, but we're doing well.
So the challenge, so the challenge with reporting this data, this looks great. York County is spending less on its students. I know local government looks at this and say, look at the high results that we have. Do we need to give? Sometimes these arguments are made by folks on the county side or on the city side. And they, and they look at that, and they say, well, do we need to give more money to the schools because the, the results are, the test scores are so high, the highest in the region, and we seem to be doing well? Those are things that we can often debate. I, I will say that I am very pleased with the support, level of support that we get from York County. Not only in operational expenses, but also in capital expenses. So we, certainly, we, we will always ask for more, and, and we will have those, those dialogues with the county, but I've always been pleased with the level of support that we have received from, from York County.
I think one of the big differences also is parental involvement in our schools is, is a lot higher. And you're talking about, yeah, Falls Church and Arlington, they have, they are in very affluent areas, they have very involved parents as well. And, but I think that York County is definitely a bargain. You get more bang for your buck here, and I don't think that we have a large waste of money like some other areas do in building schools and everything else. I think that we, we try and look at everything through a lens of being fiscally responsible, and that we put the money where it's needed to be put. In other words, we invest in our people. I, I think that you won't find any better teachers or administrators anywhere.
And I think to add on to your comment, Mr. Bowen, the highly effective talent that we're going to talk about, I think, later on, is one of the reasons why we have all this, why we get that highly effective talent, because of what we compensate our teachers for. So we do need to, that's one of our arguments to, to the county, you know, why we need money for races and that sort of thing, is to retain and keep that highly effective talent. Yep.
So we'll say, since we've been reporting this data, since we've been reporting this data, and this has been for several years now, the one consistent piece here is that we have been the lowest in the region and amongst the lowest in the state for per-pupil expenses, and our test scores have been the highest in the region. So that's been, that's been the consistency with, with this data. And I do believe that we are able to say that our, our financial resources are allocated effectively with the resources that we have. And I think that speaks to the testament, it's a testament of what our, the work that our teachers do and the support staff, and, and of course, the success of our students. Are there any questions, any other questions?
Just a comment, because, I mean, when I look at that, I say, okay, well, you're doing, the numbers show doing such a good job relative to the expenses, that you almost should be rewarded for that good work. And in some cases, you almost can get penalized for that when it comes to money, which is what I think you kind of alluded to.
Kind of felt that way through ESSR.
Yeah. Which really shouldn't, shouldn't be that way, but sometimes.
Well, when the federal government was putting out these funds, I had a big problem with this a number of years ago, that they were putting into the calculation the number of free and reduced or disadvantaged students that you have. That was a part of the calculation, and my problem with that was, other, we're all, we all receive dollars for Title I, so that's already captured. So when ESSR came out with these dollar amounts and they used the same calculation, well, our students who have, we need HVAC systems just as much as everybody else, right? So a lot of this was for, through COVID and all those types of things, what are you going to do and changes you can make? I had a really hard time with other divisions locally getting well over $100 to $120 million when we were sitting here with 16.
I remember talking about Newport News and Hampton.
It was, well, it was, I wasn't going to name any districts. But they're, but they're not the only districts, but again, it should have been based on just the student numbers. If they would have just based it on numbers and not added that, we would have benef, we would have received more funding, which would have greatly assisted us, and it wouldn't have been as difficult for the last year.
Especially when learning loss was across the board.
Yeah. That was consistent.
Yep, but that's water under the bridge.
That's right. All right. So we have a next presentation, we have our, our financial audits and end-of-year funds.
Mr. Bowen is going to walk us through this presentation as well? Thank you, Dr. Shandor, and Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. We have a finance update this evening. I'm going to review the Student Activities Fund Audit Report, provide an operational audit update, and then review our end-of-year fund balances. Board members, if you look in, in front of you, you are provided with two reports. The first is a SPARLED report, this is the actual financial report. If you look through this document, you'll be able to see the revenues and disbursements for each of the schools. Take a look at that. What I really want to go over with you tonight is the, is the insert. The insert is the comments on internal controls and other suggestions for considerations. So this is a required communication to the school board, and I just wanted to review this real quickly. I've highlighted some items in here to talk about, a little bit about their process and audit and things that they were able to find. So if you look to page two, it's not numbered, but there are highlights on that page of the insert. We talk about the qualitative aspects of accounting practices, and their last sentence highlighted there is, all significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statement in the proper period. So our principals, well, let me step back. Student Activity Funds are not a direct responsibility of the finance department. They are the responsibility of our principals. This is, the Virginia Administrative Code requires this. So as part of that responsibility, though, they also have a designee, and that's the bookkeeper, who is responsible for carrying out the day-to-day actions of, and caring for the revenue and handling the disbursements. What we do in finance is, we provide them with, we provide them with annual training with the bookkeepers and also, and also with the principals. We also have access to all of the bank accounts so that we can see what the schools are spending and how they're spending. So that provides some oversight, because we do have some, some comments, some audit comments, negative comments that I want to share with you tonight, but I want to share with you also those mitigating factors that we have in place that provides us some assurances that we're doing the right things. The second item I wanted to bring to is difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Their, their response is, we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management in the performing and completing of our audit. So our principals, our bookkeepers, and our finance staff work well with the auditors. The next one is, we detected no misstatements as a result of our audit process. That, that can happen if something's not accounted for right, you have to come back and restate the errors, but there were no errors that were found as required to be restated. On the, I'm sorry, the third page, disagreements with management, and sometimes disagreements can occur in that the financial accounting or reporting on the auditing matter, we may not agree to the degree or the level of severity in which they found, and they want to make an audit comment about what they discovered. So that can happen. We, I won't say we've had disagreements, but we've had discussions where we challenged, they presented an audit finding to us, and we've given them what we thought was a reasonable explanation, and the, the point, the audit comment has either been waived or it's been reported, they've followed through. But what they're saying here is they're, they are pleased to report that no such disagreements arose during the course of the audit. So on page five, this is the independent auditor's report and comments and internal controls and other suggestions. It just defines what an internal deficiency in internal controls mean, and also a significant deficiency. And so I wanted you to have that as we move to the next section, which is on page number seven. These are the general comments that were made by the auditors. The first is segregation of duties, and they identify this as a material weakness. Now, I will say, I've worked in three school divisions, and this is a common finding that you will find across all school divisions. And the reason is, is because we don't have the staff to properly segregate the duties. Now, what they say is, the basic premise of this concept is that no one employee should have access to both collecting the money and dispersing the money. And that's what we have. We don't have two bookkeepers, we have one. And so we see this comment in, in, every year in our report. So what are some of our material, or what are some of our mitigating factors? Well, again, we have access to all of their accounts, to the bank accounts, and we also have access to their accounting software, so we can look and view the revenue and disbursements that, that are taking place. We also provide the training, and we reinforce the fact that we have this issue of segregation of duties. What I talk to the principals about is, you're not a financial expert, you're an instructional expert. It's just that the code has put this responsibility in your lap. So if there's something that you don't understand, something you don't feel comfortable about that your bookkeeper might be telling you, please call us, because we will walk you through that and work through that process with you. It's best, basically trust, but verify. We haven't had much of that. We usually get those calls from new principals who are just unfamiliar with, with the whole process of student activity funds, where we work through them early on in their principalship to, to give them some level of comfort, level of ease in being responsible for these funds. And the second one was sign checks. We had a, a material weakness here where one of our principals signed a check to themselves. Now, what we used to have with our bank is they, we had dual, dual authentication, so we had to have a principal and then an AP, or a principal and a bookkeeper, they could sign it. But what the bank started doing is, is we don't, we don't look at that second signature anymore. However, we do have a process in place, and this goes through our annual training, that principals should not sign checks for themselves. If they have a check that's to be reimbursed to them, then they should contact the school board office, and either myself or one of my staff members who's authorized to sign the check would sign the check. So we will work through that with our staff, and we will work through that through, through training. What's good to report is, is that even though the checks were written to, to the principal, signed by the principal, there was no indication that there was any, any issue, any fraud related to that transaction. It's just that we don't want to see principals write checks to themselves. It happened, but there was no underlying issue or fraud related to that transaction. And that is the update on student activity funds. We happy to answer any questions that you may have. The other thing I just, I'll just say real quickly about the student activity funds, and when you look at the financial report, you'll see that some of our high schools have several hundred thousand dollars in their accounts. These student activity funds are funds that are primarily raised by the students. It is fundraisers for every athletic team, for every club. We have school-specific grants, they may apply to the, the foundation where they're awarded a $1,000 grant. Those, those grants are accounted for in the student activity funds. There may be donations, donations from the PTA. You can look through here, and you'll see a host of things. We also run some, some of our accounts through there. The, the primary acc- The primary account being food service. So our daily collections of food service are deposited in the student activity funds, and then monthly, those funds are transferred up to the school board office. So if there was ever a severe economic downturn, and we wanted to talk about budget cuts, where could we find money? We could not look to the student activity funds, because these are students. These are not school-owned funds. We are just the fiduciary responsible for managing what the students have raised. Yes, ma'am.
As funds come in for, say, the different sports, say, you know, football and cheerleading and all of this, as well as some of the different organizations, are those funds solid with those groups, or can they be shifted within the school? You said they can't be shifted to the overall budget, but do things get shifted within a school?
The individual clubs and the sports, no. They stay within the football team, they stay within the basketball team. What we, what we encourage and strongly suggest is that the majority of the funds that are raised in a year should be spent in that year, because those are the students who've raised it. And so we, we continue to educate in that purpose, but sometimes what they're doing is they're saving money to help offset the cost of uniforms, or help offset the cost of sweats, warmups for those teams. So we do see a little bit of that, but that's known going into the fundraising events, that this is going to be used for a specific purpose, and it might take two years to get there.
So it's earmarked?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm noticing that every school has their own categories for accounts, the way how they code in it. Is that what's left to school to do, kind of their bookkeeping, usually figure out how they're going to run it?
Yeah, so when we started with this, we had given the schools some general guidance on setting up accounts, and particularly at the high school level. It's just, it's exploded, because there's so many organizations, so many clubs, and so many teams that...
That's a good thing, remember.
That's a great thing.
So is there a code to, like, what's Series One, Series Two, Three, Four, and Six? What are they representing?
No, no. There's just various categories within, within there. We try to, like I said, we try to give them the guidance. Series Ones are generally their primary accounts, the ones that they use more on a daily basis. Then they break them down in class. So classes might do some individual fundraising, but, but how they set them up, we've given them the discretion to set those up. Okay. Let me move into the operational audit update. So one of the last things we had to do to, to complete the audit is submit our annual school report. That was submitted on September 29th. Staff were working through the weekend to get that done. Audit field work has been completed as of October 11th, so they are no longer on site, but we are still doing some communications with the auditors to just answer some final questions, or also work on finalizing the annual comprehensive financial report, which will be presented to the board at the December meeting. And we'll have the auditors there presenting that information to you. And then finally, our end of year balances as of June 30, 2024. We have seven funds. We, by code, school divisions are not allowed to carry fund balances. Any funds that have balances revert back to the county by local government. However, we do have an agreement with the county that our tech reserve, our food service, C I P, workers' comp, and health insurance funds, those funds are returned to us without, without having to request that the county return them to us. The Revenue Stabilization Fund is a fund that is, that collects our excess impact aid, but it sits on the county side. There is a memorandum of understanding that if we want to spend those dollars, it requires school board approval, and it requires board supervisors' approval. This is basically a rainy day fund for the schools. We have not tapped into it as a rainy day since I've been here. Just before my predecessor left, there was a step-down process. We borrowed, we borrowed 900,000, then the next year we went down to 600,000, and then the next two years we were at 300,000. That completed in my first two years, those 300,000. But since then, we have not used that for operational expenses. What we have used it for is, we've tapped into it to fund our tech, our one-to-one initiative during COVID, and we've tapped into it for some of our C I P. And we've had some discussions at some of our previous board members, board meetings, that we want to use what's in the operating fund designated as impact aid reversion to the Revenue Stabilization Fund for future capital projects. And we'll have some discussions with the county later this month. But let me focus on the operating fund. We had 6.37 million dollars at the end of the year, and that's made up of 4.3 million, 3.5 million of impact aid that will revert to the Revenue Stabilization Fund for a total of 12 and a half million dollars. We have all-in Virginia literacy funds. Back in September of last year, the state revised the budget for '24, and in that process, they gave us a little over $3 million. And as part of that appropriation, the state said, "We're going to give you this money all upfront, however, you have three years to spend it." So we spent a little over $2 million that first, in '24, and we have a little over a million dollars to carry forward. So that one will revert back, and we will ask the county to, to return those funds to us. The security, school security grant, this was kind of a surprise. This came to us, 85,000 the very last week of June. So apparently, the state had some money and gave it to schools. Every school got at least $50,000, and it's supposed to be designated for school security. So staff is working through that process. There's a federal piece to this, too, that's going to be on a reimbursement basis, so we're not getting it upfront. Every time, whatever we, whatever project we come up with, we'll have to reimburse that federal grant every period. And so that's $85,000, and we'll have to ask for that fund, that funding back. But the one we always focus on is that unobligated fund balance. This is what money we had left over from our, from our general fund that we did not spend. And historically, we have asked the county to return that to us. We've given them a plan of how we intend to spend that fund, those funds, and they have returned those funds to us. And what I would suggest, as we work through this process, is that that $915,000 that we will request to come back to us be deposited part into the health insurance fund and part into the C I P fund. The C I P fund is, so we have two employees that are, that are paid out of the C I P fund, and we just need enough to cover their salaries. So sometimes if we have, if we have budgeted too high for a project, we can use those excess funds to pay for those employees' salaries. But if ever those, those funds are short, then we may have to transfer money from our operating fund to the C I P fund to cover those salaries. So we'd like to transfer at least 300,000 of the 900 to C I P. The rest, we would like to transfer to the health insurance fund. I've talked a little bit about that through this year, about my concerns, because what we've seen, when we started this process last year, we ended up 23 with almost $6 million in the health insurance fund balance. Right now, we're a little, almost at $2.5 million. What we're seeing is that our pharmacy costs have exploded. And it's kind of what's happening with the GLP-1s. We talk about the weight loss drugs, the diabetes drugs. Now they made a connection to heart conditions. So these are very, very expensive drugs, and we have a number of our employees that are on those drugs. And it's not something that we can control. It's something that, because we have a plan and our plan allows for it, we have to pay for those expenses. But it's coming at an extreme cost to us. And so we need to do something to kind of shore up that fund. I'm not sure, not, I'm not sure 600,000 is going to shore it up, but it certainly gives us a little bit of comfort that we're making some efforts to shore up that fund. Now, if that fund runs short, it could be that we may need to tap into the Revenue Stabilization Fund to make up the balance. I don't anticipate that happening. We do have health insurance premiums and dental, I'm sorry, health insurance premiums that are going to increase this next calendar year. So that was part of the reason why we built in an 11% increase. That came on the recommendation of our consultant, so that we made, so we can make sure that we had sufficient balances in that fund.
Would that 11% be enough or not?
We, at the time that we made that decision, we believed it would be enough. But it just depends on utilization of insurance. I mean, just my own experience with it here in the past month has been costly, so certainly not expected, but it's, it really comes down to what is the experience of our employees and how that fund is utilized.
And on medicine, on the pharmacy side expenditures, the average that would project it, like, are we within the numbers, or are we going to be?
So at, at the end of last year, we were running at about 96%, just under what our revenue and premiums was, was, what that was generating for the fund. So we were about 96% of that cost. So that's good. You always want to be under that number, but still, it's, it's close, correct? And real quick, the tech reserve fund, 4.8 million dollars. This is, this is a good balance for us. What this doesn't account for is, it doesn't account for state technology grants that we have in reserve at about 2.7 million dollars. What we're seeing here is, this is the cash balance in those funds. The food service fund, we're being really aggressive with this fund. By V D O E's guidelines, we are only supposed to carry over three months of operations. That's about one and a half million dollars. But what happened when we came out of COVID, the federal government was paying for everything. So every school division now in the situation where they receive more money than what they typically expect, because the federal government was reimbursing everyone. So we had to submit a plan, a spending plan for that money. We're replacing all the kitchen equipment at all of our schools with these funds, and it's going to take us, we started it last year, and it's going to continue into this year. Now, the one, the one drawback, or the one kind of problem we could have with this is that in 20 years or in 25 years, when we start to replace the equipment, it's all going to come in one or two years. So that's, that's the one problem. However, we are very fortunate that we do have this money to upgrade our facilities, our kitchen facilities. And then the workers' comp fund, this is a very stable fund. Of course, we, we maintain a fund that pays for the ongoing care of employees who have been injured on the job. And one thing that the auditors did recommend for us this year, as we head into next year, is that we need to have an actuarial study performed on this fund to determine the long-term liability of our workers' comp claims. And workers' comp claims change all the time. So they recommend that we go on a regular schedule for review and that. So that would be a little added cost, because we'll have to contract with another group in order to do that actuarial study. Yes, ma'am.
I want to make sure with workers' comp, are we self-funded, or we're?
We are self-funded.
We're self-funded.
We're self-funded. So what we do is, we contract, though, with Versa. Versa is our primary insurance provider. So they provide our general liability, but also our workers' comp. And so we maintain the funds, and then when injury occurs, we report that injury to them, and they manage the care of those employees. And then a part of that management is working to get them off of workers' comp and back to work. Some, some injuries are more severe than others, and sometimes we have to settle and separate with those employees. And so that's when the cost, that's when we see higher costs
On the workers' comp, do we see more instructional employees getting, use this, or it's on maintenance side?
Custodial. We see a number of custodial, because they're lifting and mopping floors, there's slips, trips, and falls. We also see with our instructional staff, particularly bus aides and in some of our...
Pair educators.
Pair educators and our special education classes. And just, just in the first month of school, we had five claims related to, related to that, yes.
One more thing related to the C I P. You said two employees, 300,000 for their salaries. Are they going to remain on C I P budget, or are they going to be transferred to the general fund?
We, we pushed them to the C I P. Actually, the one was pushed there before I started. So that's, that's a common practice amongst, amongst schools and localities. Locality does the same. And so we also have an employee charged to the health insurance fund, and their job is primarily to manage the health insurance program. So we do those kinds of things. The second one, we just hired this employee. He's been on our budget for at least four years, but we've never been able to find somebody to, to fill this position. And that position was just filled a few months ago. Yes.
Question back on workers' comp, and this comes from personal experience. Do we make sure, I don't know if this rule is still applicable, because this has now been 22 years since my accident. I was on my way to a teachers' conference up in Ashland, was in a near fatal car accident. At first, they said workers' comp was not going to cover it, because I was just going up to a teachers' conference. Then they found out that there was documentation from the magnet director, that the three of us that were attending, we were directed to take notes, because we were going to be coming back and training at the faculty meeting. Because of that, it was covered by workers' comp. Is that still the situation, and are we letting our faculty, the, you know, the administrators, as well as the teachers, know that that's something they need to be aware of?
Yes, that can happen.
Okay.
We are aware that that can happen. When staff are directed to attend a meeting or a conference, they are really working for the school division in that capacity. And so that would be something that, we would certainly seek the advice of our, of Versa, of our workers' comp administrator, and to guide us through that process. But I would agree that if, if we had directed them to attend a conference, that more than likely we would be somewhat responsible for that, unless it was negligence on the employee's part, then we wouldn't be responsible.
Right. It was one of those things that was explained to me. If, if I had just been going for my own benefits, say, for recertification points or whatever, it would not have been covered. But because it was specifically for the school and, and training for other teachers, that it was covered. And that's something that, as just a regular classroom teacher, I had no clue about. It was just because the magnet director had put it into an email that they had that documentation. So that's something that, you know, let the teachers know, let the administrators know that that's the case, to have that. Just because when there is a catastrophic accident like that, the last thing that your spouse or your family needs to deal with is battling who's covering what and when, along those Thank you.
And that concludes the finance update.
So we go on to the presentation by Dr. Wright's, or Highly Effective Talent.
Yes, Dr. Wright's, our Chief Human Resource Officer, is going to report on our strategic plan priority, Highly Effective Talent. Dr. Wright's.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. This is Goodwin, members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to present to you a Highly Effective Talent report. I do want to say thank you, Mr. Richardson, for setting the stage for this report. And I agree with you that retaining and attracting our highly effective talent is the reason why we have such great scores and we are so successful. So I agree. So tonight's presentation supports two strategic priorities. First, pupil-teacher ratios are one factor related to providing safe, welcoming, caring environments in which students and staff have a sense of purpose and belonging. And secondly, these ratios are contributing factors to Y C S D being a destination school division. As a result, we attract and retain high, highly skilled, compassionate, diverse, and committed team Our two areas of focus are learning environment and our working conditions. There have been some updates to the Code of Virginia Standards of Quality, so our presentation will be slightly different than what we've done years past. The Standards of Quality set forth guidelines for assigning licensed instructional personnel in a manner that produces school-wide or division-wide ratios of students and average daily membership to full-time equivalent teaching positions excluding special education teachers, principals, assistant principals. In addition, grades K through six have individual class size limits. This chart is a summary of the most current SOQ class size guidelines. The State Code of Virginia, through the Standards of Quality, require that school boards shall, however annually, on or before December 31st, report to the public the following: the actual pupil-teacher ratios in elementary school classrooms and the local school division by school for the current school year, and the actual pupil-teacher ratios in middle school and high school in the local school division by school for the current school year. Actual pupil-teacher ratios... Actual pupil teacher ratios shall include only the teachers who teach the grade and the class on a full-time basis and shall exclude resource personnel, which include special education, the teachers, principals, assistant principals, school counselors and librarians. And so school boards shall report pupil teacher ratios that include resource teachers at the same annual report. And any classes funded through the voluntary kindergarten through third grade class size reduction program shall be identified as such classes. And at this time, YCSD schools do not have any of those waivers. And any classes having waivers to exceed those requirements of this subsection shall be identified and schools shall be identified. However, the data shall be compiled in a manner to ensure the confidentiality of teacher and pupil identities. So this chart shows the elementary school pupil teacher ratio. The first column, which does not include resource teachers, has a range of ratios from 19 to 24 to 1 with a division average of 22 to 1. And our division average for last year was the same, 22 to 1. An elementary school resource teachers include, but not necessarily limited to, our music, our art, PE, STEM and technology. Administrators, school counselors and librarians are excluded per our VDOE. The column on the right shows the pupil teacher ratios with resource teachers. And these ratios range from 16 to 20 to 1 with a division average of 17.4 to 1, which is well below the limits of 24 to 1 in grades K through 3 and 25 to 1 in grades 4 and 5. This slide is a summary of pupil teacher ratios at the middle school level. So the Department of Education Standards of Quality require school divisions to assign instructional staff in a manner that produces school-wide ratios of students and an average daily membership to full-time equivalent teaching positions of 21 to 1 in middle schools and high schools and a division-wide ratio of 24 to 1 for our English classes. In secondary schools and higher education, it is a practice for English course offerings to include opportunities in areas of English language such as literature, public speaking, creative writing, journalism, poetry, philosophy, theater with playwriting and psychology, in addition to the traditional English language arts classes. Specific course offerings have some variability by school due to the student interest and the program of studies. All classes that fall in these categories are considered when determining our teacher-pupil ratio. As you can see, school-wide pupil pupil teacher ratio range from 15 to 19 to 1 with a division average of 17.2 to 1. This is below our SOQ guidance of 21 to 1. School-wide averages for English classes range from 17 to 24 with a division average of 21.4 to 1, and this is below the SOQ guidance of 24 to 1. As you can see, school-wide average pupil teacher ratios range from 15 to 19 to 1 for our high schools with a division average of 15.3 to 1, and this is below the SOQ guidance of 21 to 1. And school-wide averages for English classes range from 17 to 22 with a division average of 17.1 to 1, and this is below the guidance of 24 to 1 ratio. Lastly, this slide is a summary of the classes that exceed the pupil teacher ratio parameters outlined by the Standards of Quality and letters to those families were mailed from our department last week. And so those classes on the right-hand column, we have Band 6 at Tab Middle School and then two students over that ratio. And then we have two PE classes at Grafted Middle. One has one student over the ratio and the other one has five students over the ratio in PE. One thing about PE is they are over the ratios, but they a lot of times combine those classes together with other teachers in paras in that in that gym. Next, I'm going to go into retention, lateral moves and new hires. And so employee retention refers to YCSD's ability to prevent turnover. So research shows it takes one to two years for a new hire to match the productivity of an employee who left. And so YCSD monitors overall the new hire retention rates as well as the reasons employees separate from the division. I just wanted to note, just based on the board, is 82% of the operating budget, which is approved by this board, supports the employee compensation package. And this KPI is very important because it reflects our efforts and the board's support for compensation leading to staff retention. So for FY '23, we had 77% retention rate. For FY '24, we have 20 83% retention rate for our teachers hired within the first year. And we do focus groups, which which are led throughout the year by the HR department, capturing the new employee experience. And this led to the changes we made this year for new employee orientation. And this year, we have already gone out to two schools to sit down with our new employees and look and listen to their feedback already. And so this is just an example of an ongoing, highly effective talent strategy of improving employee satisfaction and commitment, which supports our plans for continuous improvement.
Can I ask a question about the the non-licensed? When will they be licensed? Is there a timeframe of when they'll be, when they'll get their full license? Or no, this this isn't.
Non-licensed are like our paras.
Oh, okay. These are ones who don't have a license.
Correct. And they're actually in, and they're actually within our focus groups too. Whenever we go out to buildings, we do licensed and non-licensed all at once.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I just got that shifted.
You're welcome.
Sorry.
So this is vacancy by separation type. And so more licensed staff reach retirement age for FY '24 than FY '23. So fewer licensed and non-licensed staff separated from YCSD in order to work for another school division. And so those fewer licensed and non-licensed staff separated from YCSD citing working working conditions as the reason. And each year, YCSD reaches out to our licensed and our non-licensed employees to help guide staff in supporting our staff. The results of these surveys help schools and departments with how they can best support our working groups. So YCSD for FY '24, 42% point 42.4% cited relocation, personal and family reasons and military as the number one reason for separation and 25.6 for retirement. And noting that the during COVID, many teachers who were eligible for retirement elected not to retire, staying longer. Hence, that is why this is our second highest separation type. Research shows recruiting and retaining highly effective teachers is directly linked to student success, as Mr. Bowen taught us earlier with those test results. So data demonstrates the number of teacher applicants entering the field of education has declined significantly. And YCSD monitors the number of employees on the teacher salary schedule hired annually and their average years of experience when hired, as well as the regional employee trends. So the number of hires has reduced in FY '24 compared to FY '23 by at least 70. And this supports our highly effective talent ongoing strategy for improving employee satisfaction because less are leaving. One of our FY '25 strategies is to continue to focus on recruiting and hiring and allowing us for better retention. And FY '23, 38 teachers had zero years of experience. And in FY '24, 29 came to YCSD with zero years of experience. Again, our strategies to retain shows fewer teachers are leaving YCSD. So some of those strategies for FY '25 is we have an intentional approach to attracting a targeted number of qualified applicants, selecting the candidates best fit for the position and offering them employment and onboarding employees by doing, we have our mobile and our pop-up job fairs, we have workforce solutions, community partnerships and military connections. The highlights breakdown for teachers' years of experience is as follows. For zero years is 38 for FY '23 versus 29 for FY '24. And one to four years is 55 for FY '23 and 25 for FY '24. And another one to highlight is years of experience of 20 to 24, seven for FY '23 versus 15 for FY '24. So we continue to increase the level of experience with our new hires and we draw on more experienced teachers to due to word of mouth and, you know, just us being that destination division that they want to come to. For FY '24, 61 of our new hires came from local school divisions and 25 left YCSD. Every employee who separates from YCSD must complete an exit survey as part of their separation process. As part of this process, employees have an option to select a face-to-face interview with HR staff and this information is gathered through a survey or interview is used to guide next steps with retention and employee satisfaction. All right, so this is my opportunity to brag a little bit on the HR department for our FY '25 strategy results for highly effective talent. So from July until present, YCSD has hired 20 veterans and 24 military spouses. YCSD is now a V3 organization, which is VA Values Veterans, helps employers develop and implement long-term strategies and nationally recognize best practices in recruiting, hiring and retaining our veterans. Our pop-up job fair we just had in October attracted 33 applicants for various positions and we've hired right now seven of out of those pool of applicants. And in December, YCSD is partnering with the county to do a joint pop-up job fair at the new sheriff's administration building. And that is it for this evening's highly effective talent report. Questions, comments?
So I see you had the licensed and non-licensed retention rate increased significantly, in my opinion. You give a variety of reasons and what you guys have implemented. Is there something specific that the employees are actually reacting to that we didn't do in the past?
I just think that the efforts that we're putting into listening to them, being out there, taking their feedback, even this year, we've done it for two months, but just the opportunity to allow our employees to have more of a voice, even through our PALL survey that we're doing, we're asking our employees five questions every month. We're taking those questions and we're distributing them out to buildings so that we can accurately address them in departments. And so I just think the opportunity for word of mouth gets out there and the attention that we give to our employees and arm them with the skills to be so successful.
And I know in the past, I came to a couple of job fairs. Does that help for members to come in and be part of that job fairs like?
Sure. Absolutely. So the pop-up job fairs have been, we just started them, just we weren't sure how we were going to be received. And so they are are so successful now that we typically do a job fair in November. And this year, we are not doing the job fair in November. We're going to do the pop-up one with partnering with the county. And then we're going to February for our bigger job fair, which we're going to hopefully attract more candidates in that one. So any pop-up job fair, if you see it in the Friday notes when we advertise them, pop on by.
I think it's good because, I mean, when you think about a lot of awards, they're just kind of figurative and you never really see them out in about places.
No, I enjoyed it.
Here, I mean, that's what makes us different.
Well, in comments, I've I've heard from other teachers coming from other divisions. They go, wow, you're on the school board. I've never met my school board member at the place I worked at for the last 10 years.
Yeah, in fact, the last one, Dr. Shandor popped in and and Ms. Goodwin, you came to the first one we had over at Yorktown Elementary, which was successful. So it's just a great opportunity to to meet these people and jump in. And then partnering with the county, they have job openings and we have job openings. So we're going to see how that works out and what candidates go where.
Yeah.
A part of our retention positives that I've seen in the in the schools is the camaraderie and the optimism in the schools on the all the school staff. They are looking forward to, I mean, I was asking today about, is there any negatives going on? And vast majority said no. And I mean, these are teachers that I've known for years. They're going to tell me the truth, you know? And and they say that things are just going so well now and they're so happy where they're at and they're happy with their administrators. You know, it's it's good all the way around.
It's good. Our culture is strong. In fact, I was meeting with some members of my team, HR team, and one of them said today that she looks forward to coming to work on Mondays. And so that's pretty big.
Yeah.
And so it's just, you know, the the culture that we built.
Good job.
Thanks.
Yeah.
She's just happy to be out of this.
All right. So our last presentation is our self-help policy.
Yes, Dr. Carroll has a 67-slide presentation. He's worked for weeks on this presentation.
Yes, and I will attempt not to use any puns involving the word pop. So board members, yes, just a brief update on the EO 33 work we've done because you're going to see a draft policy coming to you soon. So just to remind you, in August and September of this year, the state issued both their draft guidance and their their, they don't call it formal guidance, but the guidance was issued in September. And at the same time, we were creating a stakeholder committee and also started to work on a stakeholder survey. And that survey is out right now. The deadline is tomorrow at midnight. And I've also started conducting focus groups. I've met with the teacher advisory and used them as a focus group, the bus driver advisory. Was with a group of high school students at Bruton High today. And then tomorrow, I finished focus groups with the Tab High group. And that's it's just been interesting to talk to each group and the stakeholder committee has just been unbelievably engaged in the work and very positive about this and trying to explore every every nook and cranny of of the, you know, things that are going to, you know, the implications of this. So and we've also got a policy draft that now they will look at at the next meeting and that's going to be an editing process. That's going to go over the next two or three meetings with them, going back and forth with what they see in the survey results, what I report back from the focus groups. And then they're thinking about it and and trying to work within the parameters of the executive order. And then that will culminate next month. You'll have a, you will end up with a final draft that will be brought to you as the starting point for you to look at for November 18th. But then there's a quick turnaround with November 25th, asking for an expedited approval with any revisions that you that you asked for on the 25th. And so that we can then get ready for, and this slide you didn't see last month when I updated you at that point. In December, there'll be implementation, planning and communications. So we're talking to all of our stakeholders, especially our family, staff and students. And then there may be student handbook changes that are necessary depending on which route we take. And and that's why it's really nice to have an online student handbook now that can be refreshed and as a real-time document. But we would need to come to you for handbook changes for you to take action there. So that would happen at the December regular meeting. And then in January, then implementation. So students are back January 6th and so that's when these changes will take effect. And then, you know, we don't know, there might be some unforeseen things or things that we didn't anticipate. And therefore, you will evaluate that implementation in the spring and then see if there need to be through administrative discussion, if there's anything that needs to be changed that we look forward to starting the year next year. And that that concludes my report. Happy to take any questions. Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Spare you the other 35 slides.
Just a comment, I was just reading an article today about, it was a school division, I guess in Colorado that's been doing this for a while, the no self-help policy. And what they were reporting was very favorable. Students are actually talking at lunch. They're engaging. The halls are louder, of course, because now they're talking and looking. And they've just seen a decrease, actually, in amount of discipline referrals and things like that as well. So.
We've heard, yeah, we've heard similar comments from Ms. Lugo at Tab High School.
Yeah, that's right. She's implemented at the beginning of the year.
I heard the same thing through the state, like whenever. I heard the same thing through the state, like whenever I was on a couple of meetings.
So the feedback's been pretty positive.
And I'm looking forward to the focus group tomorrow because it's going to be with Tab High Group that's already gone through a lot of this.
Right.
You know, compared to this group that has had less restrictions and the angst that is there, the concerns, but they brought up really, really important things that we need to think about as we go into implementation, we make sure we can account for.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, thank you. All right, so that was, that was the last actual presentation. Now we have policy discussion.
Sure, we've saved the best for last. So Ms. Melanie Berry, our school board attorney, is going to share recommendations for review of the policies included in Book A, Foundations, and Basic Commitments of the York County School Board Policy. Ms. Berry.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Madam Chair, board members. For you tonight are the A policies. I've broken down on the executive content, minor revisions versus substantive revisions. Your minor revision going throughout the whole A policies, you'll see that the word section has been replaced with a symbol for section, just to be consistent with Code Virginia. Additional legal references and cross-references have been added to fully support the policy sections. And where appropriate, the VSBA copyright has been added. As far as substantive revisions, Section AC, you'll see additional protected classes have been added to comply with state and federal law. Section, and I will point out the date on AC adopted, it has dated a policy manual adoption. That's the way our policy manual has read. So I'm researching the date right now. I believe it is June twentieth, nineteen eighty-eight. That's the earliest date I've found for any of our policies, but I'm still completing that research. Section AD, we have removed some language that's not required by law, and is actually, in some cases, was a subjective standard that was not going to be attainable. Section AF, this is code-driven changes, just to align the policy with Virginia Code. And then Policy AG is the literacy plan. That is a brand-new policy that aligns with the provision regarding having this literacy policy, literacy plan. And of course, that is completely. Tonight, I'm recommending that the provisions be moved on for first reading at our next meeting.
Do we make motion?
Concerns?
I think most of them are law changes, and then there was the one on the literacy plan, that was the big one. Just more of a cleanup on policies. So I have no questions.
Right.
I have some questions. Looking at AC with this, and I reviewed the laws that were cited, the two-point-two-dash-three-nine-zero-four, that one specifically facility usage. And I guess need the specifics of that. Two-point-two-dash-three-nine-zero-five is employment. Let's see, two-point-two-dash-three-nine-zero-five-point-one is dealing with the disability, sorry, wrote notes too small, accommodations. The twenty-two-point-one-dash-twenty-three-point-three, that particular law specifically says that's a treatment of trans students, and the law itself says it does not include athletics with that. Do we need, or I really think that we need to be specific in our statements because our statements seem to be very general and open in dealing specifically with the sexual orientation and gender identity, which is added in. The, because, you know, with the facility issue, there's already litigation dealing with the locker rooms and the bathrooms. We already know from Grimm versus Gloucester that there have to be very specific things done by the individual student, you know, different, basically boxes checked for that to go into effect, as well as the issue with facilities for overnight field trips.
This is just the standard nondiscrimination policy. And the two-point-two-dash-three-nine-hundred, which is the Virginia Human Rights Act, Section One lays out all these protected classes, and it applies to educational institutions. So that's where it's coming from. That is the primary area. And then the treatment of transgender students refers back to the Commonwealth laws on discrimination. So that one then comes back to the Virginia Human Rights Act. So that's where it's required to include these protected classes. In the past, we have just lumped it all into other requirements under the law. But to just be specific to meet the Code of Virginia, that's why I'm suggesting we add them all in.
Okay, I was just concerned over, because there's, I guess, conflicting laws going on dealing with compelled speech and against religious beliefs. If we can, I guess, explain and specifically define discrimination, that we need to identify that.
That is under JFHA, GBA, JFHA policy for discrimination. GB also, what's about discrimination?
You said JB?
JB has discrimination. And there's a personnel one, GBA.
GBA and JFHA.
Yeah.
Against harassment and retaliation.
We discuss what discrimination is there, what harassment it is. And then, of course, the superintendent's regs can get more into specifics because the policy, purpose of the policy is the broad strokes. Superintendent's reg is to drill it down a little bit, and then SOP will provide the procedures. So generally, your policy is going to be the broad strokes.
Yeah, just, I really think that we need to be specific in dealing with this, and then if the definition is identified elsewhere, to actually identify that so people know where to go to look at it, you know, whether they're staff.
We do have a cross-reference.
Okay.
The, sorry. GBA, GBA.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I see that. I was just writing over on their, JFHA. So J and JB is there. Just, I guess, I guess I'm concerned with this in dealing with, one of, the law that cited is dealing with facilities. And with, the court decisions have been coming out, you know, how do we handle the overnight field trips, the locker rooms, the bathrooms, along those lines?
Right now, that's all dealt with on a case-by-case basis. So because there's, you have to look at each individual circumstance when that's decided. That's why we have the broad nondiscrimination policy, because it is so case-specific.
Now, the other question I have, is this something new that's come, as far as I know, we haven't had anything new come out of the General Assembly.
No, this is just cleaning up the policy because of the past, like I said, we've always just put it into, and any other characteristics protected by law. And so this is just cleaning it up to make sure that it's clear that we're abiding by the Virginia.
I think it's like Ms. Fairman said, this is making it more specific.
If I could just clarify something, because somebody had brought the question up to me, just, and I said, well, if I would ask that, by changing the terminology or adding the terminology, I should say, does this in any way pigeonhole or lock then the school division into, let's say you have somebody now that says, oh, I want to use the girls' locker room because I'm identifying as a girl, and you know what I'm saying? Does that allow them, just because you have put this wordage in place, this is sort of a, this doesn't change anything that we've not already been doing, because they, the sexual orientation, gender identity, ethnic, or that was all already included in the other characteristics protected by law, because they were already protected.
Right.
Under the Virginia Human Rights Act. So nothing's changing.
Virginia Human Rights Act, what are the specific groups that are, because I live on the federal, under the sex it is, but it's related to Title VII, which is for employment. It's not related to Title IX, which is for schools.
So under Part B of the Virginia Human Rights Act, safeguard all individuals within the Commonwealth on lawful discrimination because of race, color, religion, ethnic, or national origin, sex, pregnancy, childhood-related medical conditions, age, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, military status, or disability in places of public accommodation, including educational institutions and real estate transactions. So it's basically word for word what's in here. And like I said, it doesn't change the way we've been operating because they were already included. It's just being specific in the policy now, so we're not lumping.
So since, when was this policy enacted?
The Virginia.
The law?
The other law. Let's see. See, twenty-twenty-one was the last change, but it goes back to nineteen eighty-seven. So what the changes are, it's been changed multiple times.
Is that not our policy or the Virginia law?
Oh, this was the law. Our policy.
Yeah, our policy, I got dates on it.
I mean, each one's a little different, but this one, I think, was originally nineteen eighty-eight, went through multiple, two revisions, and then this will be the third, so the last was December twenty-fifteen. So it hasn't really been updated since twenty-fifteen.
Do you have another question? And this is a part that's changed, it's just if I could get some clarification of what it means. The last sentence, this commitment prevails in all of its policies and practices concerning staff, students, educational programs and services. Educational programs is why I was concerned with the overnight field trips. And individuals and entities with whom the board does business.
That's your vendors. We can't discriminate against what people with procurement, when we're hiring vendors. We can't say we're not hiring, we're not going to use your firm because we don't like your religion.
Oh, okay.
If that's what they're.
Thank you.
Have we had any instances in the past that somebody filed a claim against this on discriminatory clause?
We get discrimination claims up and on. They fit into one protected class. I mean, legally, you don't discriminate against any of the protected classes. You work with the individuals on an individual basis. Those are the questions I had on that one.
Is this, how would this be affected with the Title IX executive order from President Biden, that's now in a court?
Right, well, that's been stayed, and so that's still, so any of the states that were in the, had kind of piggybacked on to the lawsuits, that's not being implemented. So Virginia is not being implemented.
So if that ruling is in favor of not covering Yankton's case, how would that affect this policy?
Until the code changes, it wouldn't. So we'd have to go back through the General Assembly, it would have to be changed.
Can I make, I mean, if you read over, if we read over this, will we do the reading at the next meeting? Questions can still be asked.
Yeah.
Come up with.
Discussion.
Yeah, we dive into it more and you think, because I know, I mean, I know for me, I mean, it's a lot, you know, dissecting policy and law, I mean, that's not my balance at all. So if we, you know, do that, then we can certainly ask more questions at that time.
If you have questions before that meeting, please reach out to Ms. Fairman.
Oh, yeah. I've done that a lot.
Well, on another note, I like the literacy plan that we did, and I appreciate all the hard work that our instructional people did to get ready and up to speed with it, and putting in the new curriculum on a turn of a dime, and having the evaluation take place this year. And I think that everyone's been jumping through hoops to try and get it all done, and I think they're doing really well with it. So I appreciate the work that was done for the literacy plan. That's probably the biggest part of this.
I would like to go back to the AD policy. I read it for educational philosophy. I disagree with the maximum to be not attainable. I actually wanted to, like, add possibly some verbiage that I think it just needs to be more inspirational. So I put it like, the school board is committed to provide an equal opportunity for every student to be inspired and empowered to achieve maximum intellectual, social, emotional, and physical growth, and ensure that each student be equipped to communicate effectively with other people, to be competent both in the workplace and in higher education, and to feel confident and confident of the ability to make, thrive, creative, and constructive decisions. So I'm kind of feeling like that we kind of just shrinking the, our beliefs in our children. And I think we need to make it more empowering, like more stronger that we are behind them, and that we believe in our system, that we believe in our teachers, that they're going to give them more than just the maximum.
Well, and the, I think the reason behind having these adjectives removed was because A, maximum is, it's, it's very subjective. So how are you going to measure what the maximum is? Because it's always going to be higher and higher and higher.
Relative term.
That, and when you're dealing in the special education realm, you're not able to do the maximum. You're, that's, it's a slippery slope.
How about individual maximum?
But this focuses, it actually says that each student achieve maximum. That's their maximum. That's not a maximum of some outside scale. That's, your maximum may be different than your maximum, my maximum, you know? I agree with Mr. Pajovich that we need to be focused on excellence here and shooting for that.
And maybe a different adjective than maximum, and Ms. Hopkins could probably explain it better in the special education area of why maximum may not be the most appropriate word there. Just she's the special education expert.
Well, when you think of the definition of least restrictive environment, right? The definition is that children, whatever the replacement they're in, they will be educated to the maximum extent possible.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's sort of your special language, but.
So it still uses maximum for that particular individual. So maybe we add something else to it, we can, you know?
So it, it's just making sure that we don't get into a slippery slope and trying to give it a more objective standard, is what I was attempting to do here. So, but it's something the board can discuss at the first reading as well.
Ms. Berry, would you like for Mr. Pajovich or Ms. Fairman to send you some of the, some of the information, like, Mr. Pajovich, what you read this evening, so I'll listen to that.
And also, one more thing, like, no, I mean, pardon me, but I am a foreigner here, so I'm like, no, she is my second language. But treats all members of the school community equitably. What does that word equitably mean?
Just equally. Well, no, they're actually two, they're actually different. Equity and equality, they're not on an exact level plane. And I kind of wonder that, like, why not equally versus equitable? But it, they are.
So the best way I, I'll describe it for you, and if you have a better example, please chime in. So if you look at two people who are trying to pick apples from a tree, okay, and they need a ladder to get up, well, this, they give them an equal ladder. This one is, they're both up there, but this person can get the apples, this one cannot, but they have the same ladder. So you, that's equality. You bring in a ladder that's a little taller for this one over here. Now.
You bring in a ladder that's a little taller for this one over here, now they can reach the apples. That's the equity.
But it treats all members of the school community equitably with respect, not bowing.
Right. So that's the visual, so I don't know how that, translate that into.
I don't understand what you're saying. It's like, you know, in those things, but like, how does it pertain in this instance, in this policy? What does it mean?
I view it as just, you know, keeping everyone on a, on a playing field, so you're treating everyone the same. Equitably.
Fair, yeah, fair and consistent.
So why don't we just say fair and consistent?
That would be better, I think, than.
Equitably.
Equitable, just because.
Equally.
I think, yeah, just have something that says fair and consistent.
Be respectful, but I mean, the point of this is to be respectful.
Some people don't even have an equivalent.
Member's reach, individuals. So I was like, I was just not getting it.
I think I want to add that in your comment to your email.
That's what I said, yeah. I was like, how about that?
What's that?
You're fair and consistent. Yeah.
We try.
Then I had a question on AF, the comprehensive plan. The use of the phrase "regional programs," both for five and six, an evaluation of the appropriateness of establishing regional programs, and then number six, a plan for implementing such regional programs. I don't know if that's the case here, that's why I'd like a definition or description of it. But these regional programs end up being unelected entities who make the decisions, taking that away from the elected officials. I know whether it's the board supervisors, the school board, other elected entities around the area, when you have a regional program or project that's put together, that regional entity ends up making decisions without the elected officials. And those bureaucrats or appointed individuals, they don't answer to the voters.
So I think what this is referring to, I think this is driven by code. I think that what this is, how you can relate this to us would be New Horizons. So that's a regional program that is governed by elected officials.
Okay.
The board of directors, which Mr. Pajovich is the.
You got an "in" here.
Right, we have an "in" because Mr. Pajovich is the president of the, chairman, whatever you want to call it. On the South Side, there's the Southeastern Cooperative Educational Program, CSEP, which is a regional program for the South Side. So I think that's the, is that correct, if I'm wrong, is that the regional program we're referring to? Okay.
That's how I read it.
Yeah. And just like WHRO, which is, WHRO, and there's a number of board members who are on that that cover.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you sure, Mr. Pajovich?
You didn't talk about literacy programs.
Oh, man, it's great. One thing, Ms. Skinner, Doc Skinner, sorry. I went for the, it's family night, and I met my son's teacher, English teachers. They're struggling with the students actually reading literature. So like, over here, we were talking about evidence-based literacy instructions. What exactly does that look like?
So the evidence-based literacy instruction is, can you hear me okay? It's based on what the Virginia Department of Education has shared with us. And there is a list of first instruction, like our HMH materials that we approve for all students K5. And then there's a list of interventions that are considered evidence-based. So one of the new interventions that we've brought to the high school level is Lexia. And Lexia is endorsed by the Virginia Department of Education as an evidence-based intervention program. SIPs, which we also use at the secondary level, is an intervention for students who struggle with reading. That's a secondary type of intervention. So whenever we provide interventions for reading, we want to make sure it's supported through evidence-based reading instruction.
Okay. Thank you. That's fine. Sure. You're going to yield the rest of your tenure.
Are there any other questions? Thanks, everybody, for the presentations and.
Thank you.
That was good.
Answering questions, very informative. Next meeting will be October 28th at York Hall. There's nothing further. I say this meeting is adjourned.
Do you want to join me?
Yes. So I know, yeah, I wanted to add one thing. We are working with Mr. Bellamy to finalize our agenda. We have a planning meeting Wednesday or Thursday this week. I think we have the agenda topics, so we know what the topics are. We're working on, we're working on the order of the topics, some of the timeframes. Because I know you and Mr. Roan wanted to put things in time, so.
Yeah.
Because if not.
We'll spend all time on one topic, and then before you know it, we've, there are two hours and haven't gotten to any of the others. So we're trying to put timeframes around them.
So once we finalize the language, I believe we have the date. So I know that it's October 29th, I believe, from 6:00 to 8:00, at the Sheriff's Community, Sheriff's Office Community Meeting, where we had the shared responsibility session. We will, I will send you more information once our planning session is over, and we'll have some conversations with Mr. Bellamy as well.
Yep. All right.
December 28th, 29th, correct.
29th for the.
Join, 28th.
28th is our board meeting.
28th for, yeah, meeting 29th, and then if you want to do anything on the 30th, let us know.
All right, we're.
Thank you.